So I'm going to call the meeting to order. We're going to, I want to suggest that we add an agenda item right at the top to introduce our newest board member. And Hannah has said she would recommend.
I move to add an agenda item to introduce our newest board member.
Seconded.
Joseph came in this late this morning and we did an orientation with Ellsworth and Jen and myself. So I will let him introduce himself and then we'll go around the table quickly.
Do we need to approve the agenda before doing that?
Probably.
Yeah, we do.
Next president here. I need a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Seconded.
All in favor? Go ahead, Joseph.
Hi, everybody. I'm Joseph Masa. Glad to be here. Very glad to be here. And had a very nice orientation this morning. So I thank everybody for doing that, taking the time for that. Let's see about myself. Well, I'm from Iowa, but spent a lot of years in Minnesota. Just recently came down here in the past year to be near family group in West Branch. And on a farm, which isn't too much of a stretch. If you live in Iowa, you find some of us farm kids. And my background is in psychology. B A, M A, M P H, P H D. I'm currently the director of programs for a nonprofit social service agency in Iowa City's Successful Living. So we do a lot of work in outreach counseling, housing, intensive psychiatric rehabilitation, dehabilitation, those types of services. Before that, I was the executive director for a national adoption agency run through the Methodist Church. And before that was the executive director for the nonprofit foundation of the VA Medical Center in Minneapolis for a number of years. Worked for a suicide prevention foundation before that. And before that was a school psychologist for a number of years in New York City. So anyway, glad to be here. So.
I will tell you that he apparently contacted the mayor looking for a way to be involved with the city and to contribute. And when the two of them, they came up with library board. So that's great. Hannah, you want to go ahead?
I'm Hannah Schultz. I'm in my, I think, fifth year of my term. I think fourth.
Is it four? Okay, okay.
Some number of years since our term began. I came on with DJ and Tom at the end of the table. And I, my day job is I work for Feeding America's National Office.
You know me. My name is Carol Kirsch and I am a retired librarian. I've worked in various kinds of libraries and I'm in my last year of service.
And I'm Claire Matthews. I'm done here. I think a year almost. And I am a teacher librarian at Lucas Elementary School. I've worked in libraries, teen services, et cetera.
Nice to meet you.
I'm John Rayburns. This is my first year. And I'm a retired professor of English and American Studies.
Very nice.
I'm Rockland. I retired from the university. I was actually, I taught educational psychology there before I became an administrator. I retired as VP for Student Life and retired for five years. And I think this is my fourth year on the board.
I think it's my fourth year on the board as well. I'm DJ Rock. And I do IT consulting in ServiceNow. If you've ever heard of that. And let's see, my main reason for being involved in the library is I was a very young parent. And I feel like this is the best I can do to basically try and improve the place that gave us so much care in our time of need.
Very nice.
I'm Dan Stevenson. I joined the board in 2021. Outside of this, I teach eighth grade USS three down in West Liberty. Great involvement.
Hi, I'm Robyn. This is my 12th year on the board. And when I'm not here, I look over the College Medicine. I teach in overseas at global health.
We went to Ellsworth. We were director of bench here for four years. And for anyone wondering, panel's cohorts started July of 2019.
Well, in the, the city council appoints new board members every two years. And you and Dan and John are members of the same class.
Despite starting at three.
Right, despite starting at three. Dan is the lone person who started at the beginning of that class. So we're very, very happy to have you. Okay. Public discussion, and there's no public members here, so I assume there's no discussion. Moving on to number four, strategic planning update. And we'll let Ellsworth lead that discussion.
Yeah, this is. I'm not sure if you're your first. If I go through for the update, it's going to look pretty familiar. We're kind of showing out our third year of a three-year plan. So we're. We're working on goal being met and moving forward. Every time I do an update, I feel so thankful for the work of the staff and the leadership teams to make these aspirations come true. So I'm pleased with what we had to report, but happy to answer any questions. And we've got a team here who can go into more specifics as we need to. Just to orient folks, we did include the entire plan text, but I shaded those things that were new for easier access. Kind of highlights the most up to date things.
Is that different than the way you did it last time? Last time you only included the, is that right? The things that were changed.
In the quarterly updates.
I kind of liked this where you get the whole thing.
I had a question about the, the social worker research that we're going to be doing. Particularly interested in that. And I'm just wondering what the timeline looks like for that and what the communication plan to the board looks like on that.
Yeah, and Jason's a point person for that.
We met this week with the practical officer. Plan will know our actual title, but she wants to listen to what we're. Sarah and the two students. One is a graduate student Zach and one is a graduate student Grace. Both, I believe, in the final years of their work. This is one of their, they do practicals. Feel like practical work. This is a new one. This came out of a much larger grant project at the university that Carol launched. We've helped start a little university. And we have two folks identified for placement here. We have outlined sort of a broad overview of potential goals for their practical projects. And then it's sort of up to them and their coordinator to decide what they feel is of interest and something they can accomplish in the semester. Of course, we've outgotten many, many hours worth of our space time and explained all the various things that they're going to be doing here. So there's a lot for them to pick and choose from. Right now, we're in the background check stage, so they just have to pick their. We'll be able to meet them and talk more in depth about what they'd like to share there from the list, which is. Most likely, like, some of the bigger term goals would be to help this be a recurring program so that placement could be happening every semester potentially. Or they could identify for us a longer term goal. Something that we could take to the city to say, there's enough here.
We didn't need rid of this.
And that could really make a difference in library operations or city operations. It was a completely departmental thing. There is also a placement over at Senior Center. So they'll get a good, the cohort will get a good overview of many different city services. But we feel like this is going to be a great introduction for library services for this team.
I'm glad Karen's involved in that and especially after going to ILA and. I forget, is it? Haven Court's library that has the first full-time.
And Cora's.
That lit a fire. That was great.
Cora was a great position right now through there in the country.
Okay. Brilliant.
So we don't have, there is no social worker per se that works here at recruitment position.
This is a third year of the three year. So this is kind of the study. Very useful to help us accomplish something instead of creating a position scratching.
Well, they, they'll be on site.
No, they'll, they do this in the school and other placements. So I believe anywhere from like eight to 15 hours.
And that's one of the goals I think we have too is just the reality check of how many hours would we need for this to be, the habits have been impacted, body, staff readiness to work with our populations and for our patrons to get their needs met. Because we know as a library, it's open much broader hours than here. So business hours, even one 40-hour condition might not move the needle. So I think this will give us a more realistic picture of how would we articulate those needs when the time comes to really make an ask.
Other questions, Robyn, on the board about the plan?
I don't know the audience for the, whether it's internal or whether it goes to others. The reason I ask this is it's really a small point, but this is in on page 4A3. And it has to do with the hook mobile. And the sentence reads, this change was made without increasing staff and the effects of the additional service hours have an impact across the library. I tried to think, what is that impact across the library? And something more, a little bit more specific would have been, would be useful here. If it's strictly an internal document, it probably doesn't make any difference, but.
That's a good question and I appreciate that you asked it. This is, I would say it's both internal and external. We do share this. We haven't traditionally shared the updates, but we will share something as a report at the end. So this is both for stakeholders like the board and if other city departments ask for updates. But it could also be public facing. So any questions like that or reminders to help flush it out are really good. I would say that all of these updates would have additional supporting documentation that kind of complements it. But obviously that's not all attached in the same place. So that's a, that's a good question.
I just love me. I, I wondered what they were and I couldn't quite imagine what they were. So anyways, another concern, and maybe the board has talked about this when this was drawn up, has to do with the, in the same page, the plans for changes to the general availability of compact discs and DVDs. And what I'm slightly concerned about is that, and the plan or the, the document talking about the acquisition of Hoopla is a, but Hoopla is, the music Hoopla provides is all popular music. They're the only venue in which non-popular music, that is classical music or opera, is available, I think, in the library is through CDs. And if those are being winnowed, then we're going to lose that availability to a minority. I realize that, but a still significant minority. It seems to be a library, one of the things that impressed me most about this library when I first came to it. It had a very robust collection of music for people to check out. So I just say that as a caution and I don't know whether, how much, you know, is being winnowed out. And it's not quite clear, but I, I thought I'd raise it because it's a minority, but it's a minority that we ought to try to serve.
Yeah, I think that there are a number of calendars maintaining the CD and DVD collections. The formats were really never designed for public use the way that we do. So it's unrealistic that we would test every item, I would come back to make sure it's still functional. We do get, you know, some ongoing feedback about condition, not a lot. But I think Anne can also speak to the particulars of sort of how we're assessing the use of those and how that fits into the bigger plan.
So one issue, so there's a reason why we haven't gotten rid of the music CD collection just yet. And that is because we have not found, especially for classical music or opera, a good resource that could replace it. Unfortunately, compact discs are becoming much harder to purchase. A lot of musical artists and publishers are just not putting them out. And so we were unable to get the large swath of media that we were able to. They're moving away. I think right now the compact disc sales in the United States are less than the first year that compact discs were introduced in the 1980s. I mean, that is like staggering to think about how huge a shift this is. And that's again, that same issue. It's just libraries not being able to provide content to their audiences because of the way that the market is structured. And so we haven't made the leap yet, but that leap is coming because we are unable to maintain or purchase new things.
I didn't know all this. That's sad, I think.
Yes, yeah.
As Sean mentioned, when we're looking at Hoopla, and I take that as fact that a lot of the music available there, I don't know for myself, but it is largely popular. Are there any other alternatives out there from a digital distribution standpoint that would feed that need that John's talking about?
There is, there's a few. I think Alexander Street Press has, it's just not as dynamic. It's not like you can put it on a phone and download it. It's like web streaming through. Yeah, it's.
Okay.
So just trying to find that niche. The big problem with Hoopla is it doesn't have Sony, which is a big music publisher. And they're on a different service, which is far more expensive.
Yeah, that's what I'm starting.
And you can download like a premium one or something like songs, say songs. So you wouldn't be able to do all of Beethoven's symphony.
It was the first.
You just have to order the show up there until.
How'd this thing turn out?
Is, is that also very expensive?
Yeah, I haven't looked at the prices.
I don't think so, but it is kind of like you logged into U2000. And you're going to a site and then you're navigating the site and then you've gotten to your content. You're clicking on the play. It just, it is not as intuitive for how people.
It's really great for academic libraries because it gives you extensive notes about the music and histories. And but for a public audience, I just, I just want to download the symphony in the land of my life.
Also have that for like live opera performances and things, plays that we've looked at in the past. And it's just been this, well, the content is good and fine and people probably interact with it. But it's just, if I had to hand sell it to you at the desk, I just feel like I would step forward. So it's always been, let me know when you upgrade.
Yeah. The UI UX.
Request.
It's a lot like video, right? That, that streams and never makes it to DVD and we'll never be able to.
Yes, the thing.
A lot of that stuff.
Right, so religion shows, never made it to DVD now. Lots of movies, especially if they're put out by Netflix or Netflix or Amazon Prime. We're never going to see it. So a huge portion of culture just not being accessible to. Spotify is now doing audiobooks too.
There's a book in this. I have something to write about this. The implication of American culture.
One of John. There you go, John.
It's the guy, right?
John, earlier comment just about, is this document internal or external? Maybe wonder, what does this look like at the end of your three-year plan? Like, what does this document look like to sing the praises of what you've been working on? Because it made huge important changes to the library that you guys should. I mean, I know you advertise ads and do them, but it's, I like the idea of having a look back over the last three years. What's, what's been done to build our community access and all these things? Like, what does this look like from a public point of view at the end of your three-year plan?
Yeah, it's kind of changed depending on the years and depending on what the plan covered. This will be, I guess I was technical here at the end of the last, the last plan. This is the first plan left of them during my, the whole plan of them during my time. I think we'll probably do a narrative report and probably some social media, some blog updates.
You don't have to have like a full answer right now.
But the crux of it will be celebrating those successes and sort of saying like, this is, this is the work that we've done on these important pieces. This plan, in some ways, is very traditional and in some ways is not traditional at all. Because we had the advantage of really formalizing it after knowing that COVID was coming. We didn't really know what it was going to look like, but we knew it was a thing. That gave us the leverage to sort of pick these three focus areas that really gave space for covering the public during that closure, during that real crisis time and then growing out of it. So I think it will lend itself well to a narrative of sort of like, remember way back when we were doing the curbside and like, here's the upswing of that where we're coming. We now have all of the general statistics from the last fiscal year as well, which will fit really nicely into some comparisons. So I think that we'll, we'll do a number of different reporting styles with it. I think it's also nice to sort of dovetail the closure of the last with the introduction of the next. So this will, we'll probably try to position it as sort of a launch pad for this is what we're, we're pleased to hear that we have accomplished the next year you've seen. And here's what we're taking on next. Because the next one will, will have much less of a tangible recovery focus from the COVID.
I just see so much in here about community connections that you built over the last three years with different stakeholders and different Iowa City. I don't know, I'm just like a community mobile crisis unit, the school district, just parks and rec, human rights office. You just made so many partner connections. You just, I don't know that just a patron who walks into the library, like who loves your library and comes every week would see these great connections that you built. So I just was curious about how you. I think you should think about how you should sing these connections that you've made because they're really fantastic.
And this is our PR person, Mammy. This will be the first time he's been here at the close of a plan. So I think he might have some good ideas to, to work in, how to really celebrate that. As with any plan, you know, sometimes like one sentence represents two and a half years of work. I really try to encourage all staff to spend time with this, whenever we would update or things like that, to remember what this, these, this is what our days add up to and that it's, it's actually pretty significant. And, and I just hope that they feel the pride that they showed over the really hard work. It happens both in the backward and in planning and that kind of stuff, but also on the front line, so.
Other comments relevant to the plan? We will move on then to 4B, second quarter statistics and financials review. I don't know, you want to talk about our meeting player or? Your voices.
My voice is terrible. Sorry.
Or if people have, we have questions or concerns, I guess we could start there about the financial reports. Then we'll move to the statistics.
Well, I was just going to say during our little meeting, I had to remind myself not to look just at the percentages because it's really each line. The percentages of amounts that seem dramatic, but then it's just really like 11 things make a big difference. But also we talked, a lot of the, I don't, we didn't see anything glaring or, and also things that seem dramatic were explained by your, once a year purchasing or scheduled expected purchasing. So I don't know if anyone else saw anything that they want to comment on, but.
I think mostly we just had questions, you know, what does this explain? What's a chargeback? What's this? What's that? I do think that Ellsworth's summary is quite helpful. The committee only talked about the financials. We didn't discuss the statistics, which are also included in this report. Do people have comments, questions, concerns about those circulations with statistics? Every time I see them, I'm amazed at how big some of these numbers are.
Yeah. Wonder, so the statistics are comprehensive and extensive. Just wondering, where does your eye go in this report, Ellsworth or any of them? When you look at it, where do you start?
I typically start by looking at the big jumps. What percentage wise would.
What's changing a lot?
And I do exactly what Claire is saying. Then I double check that it's not a zero line that's $4 spent on it or an item purchased. And then I just kind of do a reality check of, is that expected? Is it unexpected? What's the reasoning for it, et cetera? In this particular set, both statistics and expenditures, while there are some things that look a little high and low across the board, it feels pretty typical to me. First quarter, I'm sorry, this quarter update is a great time to just do that real like, if things are starting to skew, this is a great time of action. And I really don't feel that significantly about any, any particular lines. I, there's still some re norming after COVID in some of the, across the board in some of the reports. But again, I feel pretty confident with, with everything here. I don't know if any of the coordinators feel like anything in there, particular areas deserve significant comment, but feel free.
I did have one question under just the very top of the report. General Iowa City and then underneath is downloads and streaming. Are those in, included in the general? Like, it's the very top of the, says general Iowa City, like.
So those would be patrons in Iowa City. Your average citizen. And then below that are different types of cars that are available now. The big engine, private or preschool.
But these are, these are circulation numbers, right? And so, so general Iowa City, we'll just look at the first quarter. It says 180,632 circulations. And then underneath is downloads and streaming is 74,000. Is that included in the 100?
No, they're just.
It's two separate.
A lot of the ways that we pull out statistics is based on state reporting. And so some of those lines that are there, sometimes sort of why we needed this detail that it's because we need to use our state report or they're grouped together in specific ways. Because I need to be able to, we can do the state report. Couple of things just to mention, the type of format, like we, circulation of type of format is the one that I use a lot. That says collections together. And when you're looking at certain things, they might, actually some of our collections are so small that like just an extra circulation includes something. So like the art to go of it's, um, it may only be like only twenty more things circulating very well. Again, or we introduce, re reintroduce the express DVD collection this last quarter. That's why that is the chart. And another example is why circulating equipment down fifty percent. Well, we had a grant for hotspots for a little while. We no longer have that grant. So we had to deaccession some hotspots. And therefore there's just lessons in there. If they're not available too, because they've been checked out for a longer than the given period, that will impact.
And just out of curiosity, I noticed you'd lump general fiction and fiction expressed together, but you break out nonfiction expressed. There's never anything on that express shelf of the fiction anybody puts checked out, but. Is there?
There's a really convoluted reason why it's broken out.
It's okay.
It was that the express fiction covered all the Dewey, the expression on fiction covered all of the Dewey numbers. And then we break it down by Dewey.
Okay, that makes sense.
But I'm like, I'm not like fifty something items, but yeah.
Okay.
You've been a freakier.
I think it'd be interesting to look at like how programs affect your, um, circs out too. Just the one that jumped out at me was the books in other languages. Mostly because I'm trying to find children's books in Arabic and it's a struggle of mine. But, um, and you know, it's a struggle in the United States. Um, but I, I think, was it Sam had a program where she was bringing people from Kirkwood that were new English language speakers and just wondering like if that, because I think it was just a one time, but wanted to keep going with that. And maybe it hasn't happened yet, but I was just kind of curious about that, how that program would then affect your statistics, just using on that a little bit. I know it's not a great, a huge collection or anything like that, but, um, books in other languages are just on my mind lately.
Uh, we, um, in this strategic plan, we talk about how we subscribe to the Urban Libraries Council. And the big topic this week was where do you buy books and, and languages other than English? Because lots of libraries are having very difficult time buying new vendors who's apply that. It's just very fascinating to get some more vendors. You know, let's do it. If I find, we have some good backups.
I do have my log, I take anything in Ukrainian as well, which is a new, a new hot.
Well, I think some larger system physically send collection staff to other countries. Whether that's for something like a, a big book festival or fair or to go specifically to purchase. Um, that's not a very scalable model for most libraries. And unfortunately, while we have to share information because of the, you know, physically moving materials, which are often heavy, we really can't, you know, buddy up and say, okay, this year we'll send this person from, from A to B, they'll come back with everything. Um, so it's, I keep hoping that we're going to see a major distributor take on more of that. Um, but so far it's.
Yeah. Other questions, comments? Moving on, we will do the policy review of the recording and streaming policy. Um, this one, the board does have to vote on. Was.
This one, uh, you know, we've said in the heart of the committee about what to do as we read. Well, this is a regular three-year, but the last year we did it had media economy had just expired our cable program. So we were no longer receiving funding that way. And so we were no longer a public access channel for the first time in four and a half quarters, the eighties. Don't say it. And so where the policy sort of, you know, the bones are the same. So you're talking about basically creating a public access channel from nothing back in seventy-nine to creating, keeping that, maintaining that as a streaming service, basically a, a channel to be through Facebook. Um, back then there was a lot more. Think about in terms of, uh, original content creation. So they were creating TV channel shows from scratch with the help of um, KTV, but also staff here that would fund it through the cable company. So, um, we sort of talked about, usually what we normally do is go and look around at other libraries. How do they write theirs? How does ours look comparatively? There is no other library that I can find that has a similar thing to this. Uh, that's how you service was and is. Um, lots of libraries put their things up on YouTube, but it's, there's, here's guidelines for that. So, um, rather than scrapping it and putting it into lots of other, um, policies, we decided we should just, um, stick with it at least for now and just modify it to make it modern and be more upfront about the, the time, most of the time spent for reading stuff here and how it comes to service. We get a lot of requests from the public through the table up there then in the meeting room. And for a long time, we were like, sure, we might have time. And as we've done more and more of our own program recordings, it just becomes a little bit more intentional here about how one's sat on. Um, so it doesn't say, doesn't say that we can't still tape your event. And in fact, what we usually do is say this is right for a sponsorship. We, when the Bush was here last night, they approached us differently, but basically what they needed from us was the new recording opportunity of the event, um, so they could broadcast to a wider audience. And it's a really important program on transparency in government. So, um, of course we want to co-sponsor it. Um, that this sort of still works for us in that way. But you can see a lot of it.
Um, other questions or concerns? I look like you're about to say something.
No, I'm, I just wasn't, I'm not sure what seven oh three fifty-four means. That's the one that says that the board has access.
Yeah, um, I think it means this can be broadcast. Um, and in the past, there was, I think, probably some historical use of the channel as to how we can see network for the board and for asking for the support potential. So I think it, it's been in there since the. I think I just sort of.
So have full access means.
Relevant. So I thought I'd leave it in there in case anything sort of happens in the next few years.
Yeah, I don't see it doing any harm.
On the channel. I think we used to, when we were building this extension, that committee was constantly um, having a program where they had different speakers about, we used the library and it was kind of between the friends and the trustees sponsoring that. But it was doing special projects. I just remember seeing.
I think it could be about books and intellectual freedom.
Right, and special topics, right. I started a weekly chat with the board, so.
It'll help us see what the public comments. So long here. The one that shows up here.
Yeah, maybe it's time for another practicum student from the film studies. Department to, um, be a part of this.
Okay, in that case, can I have a motion to approve the policy as written?
Moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Moving on to staff reports, um, before Ellsworth does his report, I, I this is the, these are the coordinators and they're the ones who will be, we can do, introduce them. But a couple of them have reports, so, um, that's, that's who's filling us in when we need more information. Um, Ellison?
Yeah, I, um, a little bit of a dollar, um, first part of my report, uh, which I, I don't typically do. I mean, I try to focus on, on things that we're making progress on, but I just thought it was important to note for the board that this has been sort of an interesting, um, dense occurrence on behavior issues, um, beginning of the year. As I noted, there's lots of reasons that would happen this time of year and it's not completely unexpected. But, um, it just felt like entire days were being lost to, um, following up on these, working with police or other community partners, um, doing all of the appropriate reporting, things like that. Um, and it really, um, I know I felt really sort of taxed by it. Um, and, and trying to make your staff feel supported and all those steps a lot of ways. So it felt like an appropriate time to bring it up, just kind of keep an eye on it with this group. Um, I would say that we have, have not seen escalation on top of this since this report was written. So I am hopeful that this was sort of a, a beginning of the new year issue and that we're starting to, to get back to normal. Um, but that's why I included, um, the rest of it is pretty typical as far as budget process update for where we are in the year. Um, and this is the, the budget amendment that I know is the first time since I've been here that we've processed a budget amendment. This was a suggestion by finance staff to take advantage of current pricing for the clock replacement and not let that sit another six or eight months and then see an increase in the same product. Um, so that's why we move forward with that. Um, and then an update on our strategic plan progress. I was, uh, fortunate to be able to meet with Tom Earl this week to talk a little bit about the progress that's made as a planning committee and what, what next steps to take and how to bring that to the board for a bigger review, um, soon. And I anticipate having, um, more of a draft to share in our next meeting. Happy to answer any questions.
Can you speak about the behavior issues?
Yes.
Um, I think it's mostly true that I already adults.
I would say most of this, the beginning of our results, um, with a mix of, of some teen issues next time.
There's those asking, so there's indicative of, of rough summer coming, but not necessarily.
I don't, I'm, I'm, I don't think I've got anything that connects from there. I think it could be, uh.
It seems like some years we had summers with teens, but there seem to be groups of age.
There's still more like a scarcity of community resources. For, um, especially related to mental health of drug and alcohol abuse.
Something even strategy to test it.
Yes, and we, we worked really hard, um, to not default to calling the police, to try to, to explore those avenues, to connect people with resources first. But these instances just did not lend themselves, even though they can see they weren't staffed enough or they, their response time was too long or, um, they just weren't able to, to come and assist. Um, I will say that the instance that I was involved in when we did call for police support, I was consistently pleased and impressed with the way that responding officers listened to the situation and treated everyone involved with respect. And, um, I felt like they, they really, um, sort of took on our approach to working with with the individuals involved, um, which I, I so appreciate because, um, you know, not everybody, um, had those roles in a, in a time of, of high, well, escalating time. But, but I was really pleased with the folks that worked with.
It's about one thing I had emailed earlier about possibly a lockdown policy. What we have, um, uh, weapons in the pit wall?
Yes.
And whether we need to look at this, that staff discussing it all about if we have more gunplay in the pit wall.
Yeah, we've talked about a lockout and lockdown policy. Um, I've worked a little bit with the legal team on what that could look like. The complication that goes with each situation is so unique. That it's hard to, to say that this is the perimeter, like this is, if something ever, then X number of people do this. But it's also really, um, it doesn't feel helpful to, to have a policy that doesn't have any.
What is the Rex energy? They have a policy.
I think they handle each thing and doing.
Do you guys do Alice training?
We did recently, we have done Alice training in the past and we did one just last month, um, on people.
Yeah.
And that works off of those obstacles for staff who want to participate, um.
I mean, it's terrible to do it, but similar.
Similar, it's. We're, we're sort of in the unpacking phase of working on a policy draft where we figure out where can we expect to get information from? And is it? What if we hear something through a hawk alert that hasn't been confirmed by the police department or things like that? The pit wall, the gun shots on the pit wall that happened this recently was a really interesting battle of, of how things could or shouldn't work or it happened so fast that by the time we even really were cognizant of the issue and ready to send something to all staff, the police had secured the area. It was taped off. At that point, they were not restricting any foot traffic. Um, and it was just a matter of, just a matter of a few minutes. Um, but other things like the, the issue with the parking ramp with the gun that happened a little while ago. That one, well, it was handled very quickly. It was, it was much longer than the sped ball issue. So that one, there was time to wonder, you know, should we be? Is this a lockdown situation? Is there any threat to public safety that doesn't add threat to move into a lockdown? Um.
So is that, is our part most frequently used parking ramp? Is it recommended by the police that we make the public aware before they go into that ramp that there's been a hawk under, or that there's a better ramp? Increased violence potential at ramp or is it recommended by the police that we just stay silent? Because this is the ramp, I mean, it's, it's connected with the, with the library.
So the Dubuque ramp is not where the assault took place.
Okay, but if, if. Situation. And what is the recommendation that we block, make something like a Hawk over more available or that we just? Um, so, you know, there's, there's got to be experts that would tell us what's the appropriate action.
We posed some of these questions and we've also pulled some example policies from other libraries. Uh, that's kind of where we got the idea of having a two-part, both a lockout and a lockdown. Um, and I think we're, we're just going to have to keep, keep work on. My guess is this will be the instance where there's somewhat limited input until we can, we put forward a draft. And then once there's something written down, it'll be, it'll be easy to get that part of feedback back to say like, this is legally, we were traditionally suggesting we do that, but here's some other language. Um, and I think that there's some conversation at the Urban Library Council Group that we're part of about what this could look like. And, uh, I reached out to IUP, but it doesn't sound like most libraries in Iowa have anything like this.
It seems like. You know, well, just, I'm, I'm just thinking about the role of police in making that call. Um, we've got multiple city buildings in close proximity and it seems a little weird for each building to make the call. Um, so in some ideal world that might not exist, I would have the police make that call. They have more situational awareness than any other department does.
However, wouldn't the primary focus at that time be at the end city and not coming to the individual offices unless there's some communication structure setting?
Right, you'd have to have more, you'd have to have a system for notification. So anyway, involving them in the discussion certain lessons. So anyway, involving them in the discussions are in license.
I think we, we may be able to bring something back for next month or the following, um, but it's definitely on, on our radar, um. I think it's, it's also an issue where we want to make sure staff feel very empowered to take action and do not feel like my step one is to find, oh, who do you have in that policy? Like, where is it on the internet?
Right.
Uh, because I want to make sure I do it right. We want, we want to make sure that they, it's something that can be easily acted on that has that, that rule for, um, you know, I, I made this decision because of these inputs and, and that's what we're doing. Um, another factor that complicates things a little bit with police communication is, um, when I was here that Saturday, there was the, the gunfire on the pit wall, I was really here as a patron with my kids.
Mm-hmm.
Um, when it happened, I did have my, I think I had my backup piece, I like put it on, um, and was kind of working on stat and figuring things out, calling the police. And as I walked back through the building to sort of update my service desks, what I had learned, uh, multiple times, a patron would, would interrupt, would sort of say, I called the police too and we're, we're in the clear. Or one person even said like, well, I called for the libraries and like, so we also need to work something into a plan where the police understand is this a library staff person calling to get information and my patron of the building? Cause I think that that could, uh, we wouldn't want
Money there.
The directive of a lockdown to be given to, um,
A patron.
Who are well-meaning patrons, um.
Or, or much worse case, an, an ill-meaning patron.
Right, um, so the, uh, the, the public expects those have a level of protection.
I think all just the increase in problematic behaviors, I think speaks to your eventual conversation about a social worker on site. Hopefully this is isolated, but, um, you're saying rough summers and I haven't been here through any of that, so I don't know that. But, um, that's, but like having someone on site, you can have these relationships already built or, you know, like have relationships at the very least between a social worker and a staff member so that there's support for the staff, which is, as you say, exhausting and scary and frustrating. And just to have someone with appropriate training, I don't know, maybe a practicum student is a great way to look at what might be good practices for you here. I don't know.
That's one of my biggest hopes is that the practicing students can help us understand what the best, sort of on the, on the floor response should be. Um, and I don't mean this report to indicate that typically we don't deal with behavior issues. Behavior issues are a normal part of library cooperation.
Absolutely.
This has just felt like a real spike and while we have some, I would say sort of patron to patron issues around all different topics, one that happened this month that was, that, that felt racially motivated was just especially just, just disappointing and surprising and really out of the blue. People who didn't know each other, uh, different ages, just, uh, really felt counter to everything that we hoped happened in the building. Think that kind of reaction can be especially difficult for staff who are working so hard every day to try to move the ball on, on these issues.
I certainly, I personally wouldn't mind if you included just a summary in, in your director's report since you're predicting that behavior patterns might normalize. I mean, next month I, I just would be, yeah, just because I, you know, it's, it's a big concern because for staff, it must just really be hard.
One thing for context is we've been busy. I mean, it feels pre-pandemic. Uh, I came in on Saturday to work to fix all the computers in the bowl. Um, the lobby was full of people, the children's room was full, there was a line at a certain time at the help desk. And so it just, it's just far more people you need at the library, which is great. It's just, there's far more people in the library than could be considered.
Right.
Right.
And a lot of people are still kind of relearning how to be in public spaces and, you know, I think a lot of us got kind of used to that model where there weren't many people around, um.
Uh, one, one thought that I'm having, um, has to do with just making sure we're doing everything for our, our staff and volunteers for, from a wellness perspective, because I know that events like that can be really, um, traumatic, demoralizing, and I have every confidence, but I just want to bring that up that if there's any things more there are opportunities there, want to know.
Other issues or questions, comments about all sorts of report? Then we will move on to Jason's adult services report.
I have some small successes, one or eight programs here and there that I need to cover the money for. Sort of doing this, um, very curbside. Um, we mushed her injuries, she grabbed us, she had bought us the mugs, so those were out for children. So all the people are having fun, they're gone.
Dude, grownups.
Grownups, but guess what? We liked them too. Um, well, I got to go there and tell Victoria's hard work and her interns and her volunteer crew. Um, you know, talking about, you know, working with building those relationships for the summer. That's sort of towards, it's been a lot of great work with Chelsea and the Southeast. Um, stuff in Stacey with the new cricket machine, so probably play with it if you'd like.
I've got that.
So it's been a lot of great work. It's not any time that she's in the, the drop in person, she'll have to show you how to use it. Um, also there's like special crafting days, one-off events to break and slide a little bit. And then she's always great about taking photographs, so you get a slideshow of the things. I do love seeing folks train things.
Did you guys plan the mugs for the year of the rabbit or is that just coincidental?
We had the choices that Mara designed. And it's been partially probably.
That's perfect. That's even a public note. That's perfect.
Thank you, Jason, um, Community and Access Services Department. Um, the head of that department is not here today. She and her Sam and, um, he's here at a conference, I think, in New Orleans for people, um. I don't, it's, her reports are always have a lot of detail. I'm not sure that there's anything to be added. People have questions, maybe.
They're significantly less colorful with the new template.
They now make a record in the constraints. They're used to the, they were just three.
But Jason has adapted very well to coloring up his Greek words. Anyway.
I love the border. Sam finds it.
Overall, I do like the template. I think that was in the, yeah, I think that was something in the strategic plan that I glossed over, but I do overall like the format. Yeah. I think it's helpful.
And I'd say so moving on then to the development department report would be Katie, um. Anybody have questions for Katie or?
Your report just brought something that's tangential because when you had the quote from the person, special disability, special disability, it made me wonder, are we continuing to do this in the special hours for families with autism, the children that have autism?
There was one in the last quarter.
So we are continuing.
Okay.
It just made me think about families that are needing a machine based. So I, I appreciate, we haven't had this kind of report before, so I, I really found it very interesting. You, you have any sense, like in a larger community in Iowa City with fundraising, why the number of gifts have decreased? Cause I would think during recession, entering current economic times, a dollar figure might, but the number of donors would significantly decrease. But your statement said that the number of gifts decreased. I'm just a little surprised.
Yeah, I, I think probably having a position vacant for, if there was, um, any, um, stewardship of gifts that happened or communications that have happened during that time, um, uh, and I, I mean, I mean, gifts are trending larger, um, but they're off, they're trending larger. And so the number of gifts should, should be increasing over time. So I think we'll return to those.
So you think it was just noise?
Yeah, I'll tell you that, um, you know, Barb and I are co-turning the United Way campaign and, and, uh, there is no United Way in the States. It is up in number of donors and most are down.
It was more just the general culture.
Yeah, the, um, uh, so e- even, people think the economy is bad and it is hard if you, you know, if you're buying things. Um, but people think we're in recession too and that their jobs are at risk, which is less supported by the data. But it creates a real headwind.
It's individuals who are nervous.
Yeah, yeah, people are just nervous and hanging on with their money. And it's paradoxical, sorry for United Way, because of course needs go up at the same time. And so, so, you know, there is still time to participate in this year's United Way campaign. Like, uh, I'll be finding your way to the right place. Let me know.
And that data also supports the idea that individuals that make larger gifts are feeling less affected by this. They're feeling less nervous.
Right.
Um, they're going to be in some different places that are less affected by the day-to-day. And, um, and for that reason, folks that would be more likely to give smaller gifts and increments and like monthly increments, feel more comfortable doing that kind of giving, which is again, ways to why, um, really building a strong, this monthly giving sustaining program is a, is a smart idea for us. I loved that quote. I just wanted to share.
But this was an unsolicited one that somebody.
But a humanized search effort.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Katie. Um, miscellaneous, I don't think there's anything there. Um, president's report, I, I really don't.
How many reports? Just for a second.
Yeah.
Or I, I don't know, it's something about the, um, publicity about the, the free class.
Oh, yeah.
Sure, yeah. Okay, is this, um, duplicating another creative effort? And does it create any vulnerabilities with us with bringing textiles into the library with bedbugs or other potential issues?
That's why we have Fletcher.
But you know, like often places will say they want to avoid textiles in a setting like this.
We, uh, so this was something that we intentionally kept at a manageable level.
Yeah.
Um, but you can see the, in the photo still there of, it's a two-story rack. So we just, it was there for sort of browsing. Um, and it was intentional collecting too from staff members, so we moved it. Um, the story sort of, um, it brought out a lot of people.
And the story made it sound bigger, right, like your clothes closet.
Uh, of course, uh, you know, it's, yeah, it's one of those things where it sort of made it like, well, we don't have plans on making this much larger, um, and so it's been a lot of feeling, thank you for your, but sort of like, oh, we get calls for donations of books. It's like, thank you so much. Um, sometimes you can take those. Maybe it's not the greatest idea. We usually take all the books, but, uh, we know a lot. Recycle, sorry. This is me recording. So basically, long story short, Victoria is very intentional about who is on the phone and what sorts of garments are we talking about? And are, are these things like that a teenager would actually use? Did you need to wear a suit to a job interview at six? Um, uh, so right now it's been more about taking inventory of what we actually have in the collection, which is, you know, just use a couple of racks and they have a volunteer doing, um, a new aspect of it, which is just to take photographs of things instead and to think about it being like a collab between U A Y and.
So U A Y had a closed closet for ongoing. That's why when I first saw this, I said that U A Y is, I think, I would do that.
This isn't partnership. This, this was, started on our own. That's just for the kids that were here. Right, it's U A Y and here we've found over the last at least three years, these teams have some Venn diagram, but it's quite simple.
Oh, okay.
Um, which in the past, I'd say was different.
Yeah, okay.
You know, actual observation is they're, they're quite different. But we still do a lot of collaborative work together, um, to try to break the groups together. Um, so this was just in reaction to the kids in the space at the time.
Okay.
Um, and the staff were noticing.
Right.
And so they just thought, let's see what happens here with this smaller thing. So it's been really neat to see as someone who's doing it in clothes from their own closet, to see the kids wearing. This guy wore clothes.
They dressed like a librarian.
They look smart. Uh, and so there's, right now the volunteers are going through it, saying what there is and if there's been stuff there since we started this in the summer.
Okay. I think I, I maybe was misled by the article a little bit, so I appreciate that.
No, I mean, we do get the calls of like people that, I've been waiting to get rid of my closet. That go back thirty years.
She went to the waterway.
We started a Pepsi shop.
It seems like this could be a program, like a swap event situation.
Yeah, well, the university does that. The university has like a weekend that they focus making it to the red center where they collect those for about the same reason.
And you realize it's done like a, um.
Yeah, yeah. Like when you can do it with a high school student group and it's student group-led and advertised game of high schools might seem a different, um, a, a different self.
Right. And I can tell you what my, what my concern is, is it's kind of mission-driven that as we see greater needs, the libraries are being asked to serve everything and is this something we want to get into? That we have to be very, very purposeful or else we will become, as we've seen over many years, kind of a place where every unfunded civil service ends up being dumped.
Yes.
And we want to be purposeful, so we want to be purposeful about what we're willing to take on and still protect our mission.
Yeah, Elderland, I made a comment that, that we write down that man. So it's been a little bit of like, I hope this isn't too successful, but also like, uh,
You want to help.
At the same time, you're like, it's so cool to see a kid say, I don't have a winner code in here. I think I got one actually, um, and to make that.
Right, and the need's real. The need's real. I don't question the need. It's just.
And even when we've done the drives in the lobby, you know, that's probably more our avenue is like working with collaborators.
Yeah.
And being the site.
Right, that makes sense. That makes sense.
And having people go ahead and use the code. There's one right there.
Yeah, the drives make sense to me, I guess. It's just when you start to feel a little stubborn.
And, and I think that is a, a good generalizable model of, you know, we're the site that someone else is running against in some way.
I see that with so many adult services services, in particular, SL, there's so many groups locally that you can base them there. They don't need us.
Right.
And we send people there, workforce development, same with like resume help getting a job. Like, sure, we could offer those one-off programs, but I could also just send you over to signal.
Right.
Or you still say, they're there.
Oh, we are going to offer.
That there's some acknowledgement of what the library is doing and there's some compensation or something. If it's, if it's renewing driver's licenses or if you can, don't start on the kiosks.
Talk, we figured yours out.
Yes, I think this one is targeted enough and seems to be, like you said, coming from the kids themselves, that that gives them ownership of that space and hopefully organic rather than systemic. Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, like many teen projects, it lasts until the teen moves away and then, and then it's kind of, it's gracious. You know, um, this is not going to be a wait, we can see the situation too.
It's been good during like MLK months, particularly in the Black History Month too. We were looking through some, um, some new books. We were looking through some some new books about Black Panther movement and how there was like a clothing. Drives happening through those organizations too, communities helping. And so that's getting a little bit kind of inside too.
President's report, I don't really have much of a report. Next month, we will be doing the director evaluation. So part of the meeting will be closed session. I also will be appointing a nominating committee for officers for the next year. So if you're interested in serving on the nominating committee, let me know. Otherwise, I'll just call some people. Announcements from members? Anybody have?
I have more of an inquiry and. I'll just say it. I know, and this is going to be a Debbie Downer moment, I know that a. This is going to be a troubling legislative session at the State House and so I just would implore. Everyone, if there are things that are going to be coming up during funnel especially, let us know. I I know that there are already things that are being considered with regards to accreditations of school librarians in particular, if I'm hearing it correctly. But if there are things that are coming up and we can in any way advocate, let us know. I don't want to be caught flat-footed on any of that.
I L A is working, I want Library Association to do a legislative day and so if we get more details. We were talking about having more board participation on there because it's really important to hear from citizens as well. And not just librarians, the power of libraries and some more information about.
Give you a day.
Does I always send out legislative orders?
They do.
This one just came out this afternoon.
I don't think I got it.
It's up on Twitter too.
Take a look at I L A, put a site of agenda.
I'll make sure I subscribe correctly.
It's an actionable reference. There's a.
I got it out.
I saw you.
Anybody else? Committee reports to the foundation committee meet? No.
We're going to be meeting for Ellsworth's review on Monday.
Okay, okay. Then moving on to the communications, I think we kind of covered maybe already. Yeah, that's, no, it's it's good. Then moving on to the consent agenda, anybody have corrections to the minutes? Or do they see problems in the dispersment report? No? In that case, I need a motion to approve the consent agenda as written.
Let me make an action.
All in favor? Then next month, I'm looking at next month's agenda. I think we've pretty much already. Talked about that. So I think I will move that we adjourn the meeting.